Okay. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Amherst Board of Education to order, please. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Yakobozzi.
Here.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mrs. Gillis.
Here.
Mrs. Nider.
Here.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented, including any and all addendums thereto.
So, second.
Rex, Mark, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis. Mrs. Nider.
Aye.
Mr. Yakobozzi.
Aye. The board recommendation, we, I don't believe this takes a motion, correct Amy? We can appoint somebody, correct Amy?
This does have a roll call, yes.
It does, okay. So, I would need a motion to, we can appoint somebody as president pro tem at the January organizational meeting, correct?
Yes.
There are motions for Rex? Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mrs. Nider.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Yakobozzi.
Aye. Good news report, Mr. Casey Wolf, our athletic director.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. Thanks so much for having us here tonight. Busy time of the year, we have a girls' basketball game getting ready to start here soon, so appreciate you accommodating us and getting us in here first. We had a great fall season, you know, and you'll hear some of that here tonight. I'd like to call forward our Southwestern Conference MVPs. Ryan Yoder's not here, he's playing basketball for the JV team at Wadsworth tonight, but I'd also, Luke Bolzby and Laken Voss are both here, if they could come forward, please. I am going to talk about Ryan first. He entered the Southwestern Conference Golf Championships in early October needing to make up four shots at the Southwestern, on the Southwestern Conference Boys Golf Individual Leader for MVP. They actually played together that day in the same group, and when they stepped on the 18th tee box, Ryan had made up those four shots. They were tied for Player of the Year going to the 18th green. Ryan made four, his opponent made six. Ryan made it about a 20-foot putt to put the pressure on him, you know, because he had a chance to make four as well. But, so Ryan did what he needed to do and was named Southwestern Conference MVP, so if we could give Ryan a round of applause. Next, I'd like to recognize Luke Bolzby. He runs Boys Cross Country for us. He won the Southwestern Conference Meet, and for that Saturday in mid-October, it was like October 16th, I want to say 15th, it poured rain like all night before that, all morning, and Luke was tremendous under tough conditions. He also had a tremendous season following the Southwestern Conference Meet. He finished the season at the regional meet, and he's a sophomore, so we are really excited to see him compete for the next two years. So, congratulations to Luke Bolzby. Lastly, I'd like to recognize Laken Voss. Laken capped off an amazing volleyball career here. She earned about every award possible this season. I'm going to try and name them all, I'm sure someone will let me know if I forget one. First Team All Ohio, First Team All District, First Team All SWC, First Team All Lorain County, she was Lorain County Player of the Year, Southwestern Conference MVP, and she was also Lorain County Miss Volleyball. In addition, it should be noted that she accomplished a feat that I can't believe many others in the state, let alone the country, have achieved, and that is, she recorded 1,000 assists, 1,000 digs, and 1,000 kills in a career. And the reason I don't know, that's such a rare feat for one athlete to do, because you have to play so many different positions to achieve that. So, congratulations to Laken on her tremendous senior year and her tremendous career. Thank you both. Laken, you can stay up front. I need the volleyball team to join her up front, please. I would also like to call forward community member Chuck Winarski and school board member Valerie Nider for this presentation, please. Chuck, you want to read that? You want to read that? Okay. So, as we all, as we all know, our volleyball team had a tremendous season today, along with the marching Comets who we're going to recognize next, today was Lady Comet Volleyball Day here in Amherst, Ohio, along with the marching Comets. They had a tremendous run this year to the Final Four. I'm going to turn this over for a proclamation that Mr. Winarski has for the volleyball team.
Good evening to everyone, oh, sorry about that. Good evening, everyone, Chuck Winarski. On behalf of Mayor Casillo, who would like to be here unfortunately, is not feeling well at this time, I'm very excited to present a proclamation on behalf of the city of Amherst. The proclamation, and it reads, whereas on August 24th, 2021, the Lady Comets volleyball team opened their season with a conference win over North Ridgsville High School, and whereas the Lady Comets went on to win their first seven matches, setting themselves up to become the Southwestern Conference Champions for the 15th time in school history with 13-1 Southwestern Conference record. And whereas, on October 30th, 2021, the Amherst Lady Comets beat the OHSAA Midview District Champions, defeating Westlake 3-1 with scores of 25-18, 25-18, 14-25, and 25-16. And whereas, the Lady Comets became the OHSAA Norwalk Regional Champions, defeating St. Joseph Academy 3-1 with scores of 25-13, 25-15, 23-25, and 29-27 on November 6th, 2021. Whereas, on November 11th, 2021, the Lady Comets earned the honor of playing Olentangie Liberty at West State University in the OHSAA Division One Final Four, ending their stellar season with a 23-4 overall record. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Mark Casillo, the mayor of Amherst, and on behalf of our fine community, we celebrate the winning accomplishments of the Amherst Lady Comets volleyball team. We salute their success by declaring December 22nd of 2021 as Amherst Ladies' Comets Volleyball Day. Congratulations.
Thank you Chuck so much, and thank the mayor for providing that proclamation for this great team and their accomplishments this year. Coach Sanchez is unable to be here tonight, but Sherry Horvath, an assistant coach, would like to speak, I believe, on behalf of the team.
Yes, Felicia's not here, so we just wanted to thank everybody for being so supportive. We couldn't have done it without the wonderful board, the community, Joe, Casey, I mean, everybody was just, it was amazing. We felt like superstars for a couple of weeks, so we just, we can't tell you enough how much we appreciate you guys and the support, and of course, these girls, they get all the credit. They did all the hard work, so we're very thankful and appreciative, and hopefully we can continue on this very successful path.
And one last item, Mr. Teller has a plaque here that he would like to present to the Board of Education to be hung in the board office that recognizes this stellar season. This is a gift from the program to the school district, so thank you very much.
And on behalf of the Board of Education, amazing students, amazing staff, you have represented us well across the state, and we're all so proud of you. And I have a picture to hang with your proclamation at the high school.
Ladies, thanks so much for the run you took this community and our school district on this year. It was awesome, and I hope it's something you guys remember forever, because we certainly will. Thanks again. Next, I'd like to call Mr. Chris Barbero forward, and I believe he has some marching Comets here with him. As mentioned earlier, today was also Amherst Marching Comets Day here in the city of Amherst, and Mr. Winarski's back for another proclamation reading.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Mr. Barbero, it's been a while. It's great to see you. For those of you that don't know, my daughter was a baritone with a marching Amherst Comets. I see something on here, looks like you guys beat Medina this year, huh? Congratulations, bravo. My daughter was excited to hear it when I talked to her on the phone last night. Congratulations. Once again, Chuck Winarski here on behalf of the mayor who regrettably could not make it this evening. What I have here is a proclamation, a really long proclamation. Not that the volleyball team wasn't long, this one goes on and on and on. So, let's begin, shall we? Whereas on September 18th, 2021, the Amherst Marching Comets performed with pride at the Perkins Competition, reflecting positively on the Amherst Exempt Village School District and the city of Amherst. And whereas on September 18th, 2021, the Amherst Marching Comets earned first place in AA Best Music and was named Grand Champion. And on, or pardon me, and whereas, on October 9th, 2021, the Amherst Marching Comets earned first place AAA, or AA, excuse me, at the Avon Lake Competition, Best Music, and again was awarded Grand Champion of this event. And whereas, on October 16th, 2021, the Amherst Marching Comets earned first place AA in the Copley Competition, and once again, for the third time in 2021, were awarded Grand Champions of the event. And whereas, for the first time, the Amherst Marching, in Amherst Marching Comets history, these extremely talented and dedicated musicians went undefeated in competition. And whereas, in the evening of October 30th, 2021, the Amherst Marching Comets participated in the state marching band finals qualifying for the 19th year in a row. The Amherst Comets, for the 16th year in a row, brought back to Amherst the highest rating possible. And whereas, the Amherst Marching Comets have delighted many of their performances in the Memorial Day Parades, Homecoming Parades, The Miracle on Main Street Parades, and have represented Amherst High School as halftime entertainment for the Amherst Comets football teams. Now therefore, on behalf of the mayor, Mark Casillo, with authority vested as the mayor of the city of Amherst, on behalf of our fine community, we'd like to celebrate the many outstanding accomplishments of the Amherst Marching Comets. We salute your efforts, talents, and we declare December 22nd, 21, as Amherst Marching Comet Day. Congratulations.
Surprise. I just want to say thank you very much for your support, Mr. Teller, Mr. Wolf. It was a magical season, something that was very nice to have after the year that we had last year, so to speak, and we appreciated the support from the board and from the administrators, the down-the-hall state send-off that we got for the first time, and just seeing the looks on the kids' faces as they walked past us, that they were so happy that their friends were supporting them. What a great way to garner that support from the whole building. And then even the state send-off with the police as we were leaving, I even got teary-eyed because it was just phenomenal. So, thank you very much, the kids did a great job, and we appreciate all the support and the love that we get from everybody. Thank you. And on behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to present Mr. Barbero with a photo of the band that they can hang with the proclamation at the high school.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having athletics here tonight, and you know what, I, one second. Our cheerleading team, I'd be remiss without saying, our cheerleading team did win the SWC competition. They will be recognized, they are also cheering tonight at the boys' basketball games, so they will be recognized at a board meeting in the next half of the school year. But, I would be remiss without saying, congratulations to our cheerleading team as well on winning an SWC championship. Thank you very much for having us.
Casey, Chuck, Sherry, Chris, thank you all. These kids couldn't do what they do without your guidance, so thank you all for what you do. Brian, you've got a tough act to follow, where are you at? He's hiding, see him?
Yeah, hiding back here. All right. Got it. All right. Hi, my name is Brian Tepner, a proud principal here at Powers Elementary. It's my opportunity to share some good news with the board. Thank you for this opportunity, President Yakobozzi, I appreciate it, and the board. Want to start off sharing a couple of pieces of information. Basically, want to talk a little bit about PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. It is the law, it's been enacted as law that everyone should be following the PBIS way, but I thought it might be powerful for our school board to know a little bit more about PBIS and kind of why we're doing PBIS and how it's data-driven. So, a couple of quick things. If you do not know, PBIS, you know, when we go into instruction, we often think about, you know, the struggling child, and academically, how do we support that child? We instruct them, but we forget that with behavior, when there's inappropriate behavior or learned behaviors that are inappropriate behaviors, we have to then provide instruction on how to make better choices behaviorally as well. So, that's what PBIS is really about, celebrating those behaviors that we want to encourage, and then reteaching those behaviors that we want students to relearn a new behavior for. I have no idea if we're on the same screen, but look at that, we are, okay, fantastic. So, PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. So, you can go on to the next screen. So, the nice part about being in the Amherst School District with the supports we have from our school community, the ESC has provided some additional support, so we've actually had someone come in, because we have a PBIS committee, but as I inherited the position of having a PBIS school, who is super proud of all the things we've done, and we are very proud of what we've done, it's important to figure out, where do you go next? So, we have PBIS in place, we have superpowers in place, we have students learning the vocabulary and teachers rewarding the vocabulary of being respectful, responsible, showing kindness, and showing school pride. The kids know those are our superpowers, we're rewarding them regularly for those things, but then it becomes, what do you do next to do totally be Tier One PBIS with fidelity? So, we were able to bring in an expert, and if you can go to the next slide, to do a tiered fidelity inventory, which actually shows us exactly where we are within the implementation process, and then it essentially gives us, and don't worry about trying to read all that fine print, the essentially, it gives us a roadmap of, in order to score higher on the areas that are orange or purple, it tells us, you need to do these things in order to score even higher to show that we're within fidelity of our Tier One implementation. So, if you slide to the next, go to the next one. So, basically, we now have a list, because we've done this, and we will do our tiered fidelity inventory three times a year to check our progress, we now have a list of action items. So, what's really cool is, yes, being here tonight, reporting about PBIS, is one of the checkmarks that I get to check off to say that I went to a community forum and then spoke publicly about what our superpowers are, so thank you for helping us check a checkbox on our tiered fidelity inventory for the spring. But that is something, as an example, we do monthly celebrations with our students. I do want to share.
It's okay, I have pencils.
Amy's made better choices than I have today, so she can have the pencil.
So, students are celebrated once a month, we, in addition to that, we do a drawing, so 20 students or 22 students are selected, 11 at each grade level, so every teacher's selecting two students that that month have represented the superpower for that month the best, they get brought up, they get celebrated, and then we send some students home with a T-shirt that says that they've shown their superpowers. We also want it to be communicated home, so we've started a sticker program as well, so students just on the everyday basis who's showing, making great choices, we reward them and recognize them. So, I just wanted people to know a little bit about it, so I won't go too much into it, but we're very proud of the work, it's not easy. I will tell you, the hardest part, it's very confusing at times, because you can think to yourself, we're a PBIS school, so therefore, we're only doing positive. No, we still hold students accountable, I would want you to know that PBIS is about both. It's about, yes, recognizing that students are doing great things, and it's also reteaching kids when we're not making the best decisions. So, I want to make sure, also, I think I've opened the wrong PowerPoint, so I can see it there, though. Starting to get back to normal, so I want to share that some of the things that we're starting to be able to do that we haven't done in the past, we've got musicals again, we had fantastic musicals. I'd like to recognize Doug Togdel and his Comets Live crew, they've been recording our, you know, they have worked so hard over the last month, not just here at Powers, but I'd love to recognize them for all the work that they're doing. They have been at every musical, even my daughter's high school musicals for steel, so if we could give it a round of applause to the team for that. Some sense of normalcy, you can see in one of the pictures, my assistant principal getting tied up by the Grinch, we're starting to get kids doing some activities that feel a little normal. And this kind of brings us to, and I can't read the quote, maybe somebody who's, can see the quote in front of them can read it, but we did a, you know, we're trying to figure out, how do we do things in this challenging time with COVID? We wanted to recognize our veterans, but we also didn't feel like bringing in our veterans into the school with so many students and with the possibility of, you know, endangering the safety of our veterans, so how do we recognize them in a special way? So, we did a parade around the school. It was actually really heartwarming, the kids were out there celebrating, singing songs, people traveling through with cars, and I received a really nice letter that this parent said we could share. Do you mind reading it? Steve, do you run, or Mike, do you mind reading it?
Thank you from the bottom of my family's heart for recognizing not only my husband, who's a veteran, but all of them. It was such a heartwarming parade that left me speechless with tears in my eyes for our service men and women, past and present. Thank you for teaching these young, impressionable kids what that looks like. Heather Perch.
Thank you. The last thing I want to talk about, I guess, before I hand it back off to the school board is just to say what an amazing community this is. Not only do they support us every day at school by sending us their most prized possessions, their children, we've asked our PTO and our school have asked our parent community to step up in some new ways. We asked them, we did a fundraiser, a charity fundraiser, to ask people to bring in donations for the different grade bands, bring in, one grade level was asked to bring in for the pre-K community, a different grade level was asked to bring in gifts and charity for the Powers Age kids, for the junior high kids, and for the Norton Junior High combined, and then the high school kids. I can't even begin to tell you, it took our staff and the PTO over four hours to gather all the materials that were collected over just a week and a half, two-week period of time, thousands and thousands of dollars worth of just diapers, small token gifts. We asked everyone to keep it small, you know, $10 is a great thing, just donate to our community, and we promised them we would give it back to our community, and we did that. We were able to give that, those gifts to families, so the families could go home and have gifts for their children at home. We had some leftovers, and we were even able to celebrate, we had so much that we were able to give some gifts out during the Second Harvest, December 20th event as well, so some additional families got some diapers and some of the items that we had excess of that we weren't able to distribute to our families earlier in the month. So, I just want to say thank you. I also want to say thank you to our Power staff and to the Amherst Exempt Village Schools' staff that came, I know that Sarah was there. On December 20th, we did a Second Harvest, I think we supported 338 families?
408 over the two events from last week and this week.
So, pretty heartwarming to be able to support families, lots of thanks and appreciation from them, and I just share, thanks to you for letting us do the work that we get to do, it's an amazing thing that we get to do every single day, so I just want to say thank you.
Thanks, Brian. I'm not saying a word.
That was a great segue into what we're going to do next.
It would have to be him, wouldn't it? It would have to be you, wouldn't it?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Tonight, we have some special guests with us this evening. We have Reno, who is the Northeast Regional Manager for the Ohio Association of School Boards, School Board Association, and he would like to address the board this evening as well. Reno, the podium's all yours.
Well, thank you very much. This is a true honor to come out to people's last board meetings, and on behalf of the Ohio School Board Association, thank you for the many years of service, for a few of you leaving the board today. We know how hard it is to, every other week, you got to be somewhere, time away from your family, it's not always, you always walk in the grocery store and people are happy to see you, but this is a beautiful school, what a beautiful community, and I think how lucky they were to have a couple of you as board members. We do recognition for years of service, and I have, actually have three in my hand right now. Every year, we start at 10 years and we go in five-year increments, all the way up to, I had one a couple of years ago who did 52 years, which was pretty incredible. So, my first one was, is to board member Mark Zappa for 10 years of service. I'll come at the landing there, so congratulations on 10 years of service. Then I know you have 12 years on, Valerie, but a couple of years ago, you would have got a 10-year certificate, but with COVID, we just couldn't come out to the schools in the spring conferences, but on behalf of the Ohio School Board Association, including myself, thank you for 12 years of service, and I wish you luck in retirement. And then there are about 3,500 board members in Ohio every year, and about half of those probably don't run for reelection or don't get reelected, so when you do 43 years, you are in an exclusive club. I don't have many over 40, just because it's just, it's incredible to do 40 years, 43 years. So, board member Yakobozzi.
I've been called worse.
Yeah, I don't mind, my last name's the same way, too, but this is, this is literally incredible to do that many years and still look good. But on behalf of the Ohio School Board Association, thank you for so many years of service, and thank your family, seriously, thank your family, because I, we know how much demanding it is on the family that you have to be somewhere every two weeks, and you sometimes just can't go to the football game and enjoy it, someone's always in your ear, and I've been, I was there, too, I was a board member for about 20 years, I remember going through that. Sometimes you have to sneak in your kid's concert just to, just to hear him, or you got people in the community always wanting to talk to you, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm talking to her right now.
Stand up?
Yeah.
We're the same, we have to stand up. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much. Taking time out of your busy schedule to come and make that presentation this evening. And once again, we have Chuck, who has been a long supporter and friend of the Amherst Exempt Village School District for many years. I know for the last 15, 20 years, he's been involved in many projects and many things, and he would like to say a few words tonight to the Board of Education as well. So, Chuck, podium's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Hi, I'm not sure how this is going to go, I've tried writing speeches, and then the wife said, just speak from your heart, and that makes more sense, so, you know, what direction do you take here? This may be self-indulgent, excuse me, but I just can't tell you how fond and how much admiration I have. me, but I just can't tell you how fond and how much admiration I have for both Valerie and Ron, I'm sorry, Ron, Valerie. And a couple of things were touched on in advance of my coming up here. I'd like to echo what Reno had, to say, Dwayne, Natalie, being on school board isn't in a vacuum. You don't, they don't do it by themselves. Yes, they, they're the, they're the faceplate, but you're the sounding board. You're the person that's there to support them. You're the person that's there to give them a hug and say, "It's okay, answer that phone call, go up there and, you know, be a school board member. Give to your community before you stay with your family." So I'd just like to take a moment and thank Natalie and Dwayne. Bravo. Well done. Thank you for your support of them. Ron, I just, I was thinking about, first time I met Ron is 2008. Valerie, who I knew from soccer, my wife was a PTO mom with her, back in Mrs. Walder's class, I think, her favorite PTO mom and dad. You see, now here comes self-indulgent, a story I should be talking amongst themselves. Anyhow, I was invited to run a 2008 school board levy, darn thing lost by four votes. I was invited to come back. In between that time, there was, Mr. Boynton left, and they brought on Mr. Sayers. Obviously, there's a recruitment process, and one of my favorite stories, and if you've heard this before, well, you're gonna have to suffer through it again. It's how they recruited Steve. They brought in professional recruitment team. But during the course of that, when they narrowed it down to the finalists, I was later told by Mr. Sayers that he was approached by people in his community saying, "There's a guy downtown asking about you," just tapping strangers on the shoulders, walking into restaurants, asking, "What do you think of your superintendent?" And when I think of Ron, it's just, he's the guy that does stuff behind the scenes, doesn't want any credit. I, you know, very few people know this kind of stuff. He continually gives and gives. When I met Ron in 2008, he said something that's echoed in my head, and I've carried it into my work with city council. And as goes the schools, so goes our community. And that was mentioned by, you know, Principal Brian. Amherst Schools is the community. And admiration, respect, gratitude, you, you guys have done a fantastic job, you know? I got to know you very, I feel closely during 2008, during those, those levy years. It was amazing. People don't realize, we had a letter from the state saying that they were gonna come over, come in and take over if we didn't pass that next levy. It was insane. And not that other people weren't involved, but I've never seen two people work harder than Valerie and Ron on, on that levy. It was, it was an amazing experience. And thank you for the opportunity, just for me to say thank you for all you've done. As goes the schools, for what you've done for the schools, but you've also done it for the community. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Chuck. Thank you. You done yet?
We're not done. They told me that we had an hour for this presentation.
Oh, no.
You know, we're getting done. We don't like this kind of stuff. Well, Teresa's the one that authorized it. So they asked me to say a few words about the two of you. But I don't know what I'm gonna say, because Reno's done everything, and Chuck has followed up with that. So my words is, my words are, is that it has been a great opportunity to work with both of you. Ron, I haven't worked with you for 43 years, thank goodness. I have had the pleasure of working with Valerie for 12 of those years, from that perspective. So what has been said is, it is certainly true. Being an elected school board member for the community is a challenge. And sometimes when you think, gee, I'm ready to make a big difference in the school district, and then you get here and you see the reality of what our role really is, we have to stop and pause a few minutes and think, wow, I didn't realize that I have the authority to help make such an impression on this community, because as we all have heard, the school is the base of, of any community. And if you think about that, look at the surrounding communities in this neighborhood, in this county or other counties, and see how their school district compares to how their community compares. And I think you'll see that Amherst is by far one of the best school districts and one of the best communities in Lorraine County, to bring up children, to educate children, and to provide them with what they need. And there's many times that when we come together as a group, people think, well, how do you guys make these decisions and do that? Well, we do that individually, and then we have a discussion about that, because from our own hearts, sometimes it's very difficult, because just like Reno said, you have people at you continually, because they think that you're going to be the one that changes this at Powers, or changes that at the high school, or changes that wherever in this system. And that's not our role. And I think it's important for everyone to understand that we have to have the, the big picture, just like Chuck said, you know, we were ready to be taken over by the state, which would not have been a good thing. You've seen school districts in the area that's been taken over by the state, and what has happened to that? So I think that, I know each of you have had many sleepless nights, many times as you think, oh my gosh, am I making the right decision? Because you're making the decision based for the whole community and everyone that's going to impact. But you both have shown that dedication for 43 years, or 12 years, and I know that it's been a challenge at times. I know that there's been some heated discussion, but one thing that we all agree at this board, and we've all agreed is, that to keep the community united, we had to be united. There are many times that we may not have agreed, but when a decision was made, and I'll be very frank with you, when we hired Mr. Sayers, it was not a unanimous decision. It took some convincing and work to make that happen. And yes, we know that Ron was all over the country asking about Mr. Sayers. But hindsight from that 12 years ago, 16 years ago, however many years you've been here?
Fourteen, fourteen.
Okay, fourteen, I should know that. That was my first job as an alma mater, okay? On the school board. So in those 14 years, we have made the school district go from zero, or takeover almost, to where we are today. So that's because of the dedication of the board members. So I appreciate you and I thank you. And with that, because this is your last meeting as a school member, we would like to present Valerie with this gift as our, for your dedication and appreciation to the Amherst Schools, okay? And Ron, maybe we have something for you. I'm not sure. Of course, we have the card upside down.
Well, it's appropriate.
So Ron, there's something for you as well?
Thank you.
I believe that they'd like me to open those. Is that a true statement?
Let's go for it.
Okay, so we're gonna take a two-minute wrap-on session here, unwrapped session.
Who wrapped these?
Doesn't matter.
Amy?
Normally, I'd save the paper, but I guess not.
I didn't break the ribbon.
That's a good thing.
Should I wait for you?
You were ahead of me.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, my, that's beautiful.
That's cool.
That is beautiful.
Can you see it?
Those are gorgeous. They're beautiful.
Mm. No comment. That's pretty neat.
Beautiful.
Yep.
Christmas is coming early.
Amy, look at that.
I was just joking. I am not my Aunt Bunny.
Yeah, I'll hold it up for you.
But I am not my Aunt Bunny.
You had something to do with that, didn't you?
I had nothing to do with it. You have asked Mark and Teresa.
Yeah. Beautiful.
Yep.
Wow.
They're from Italy. That's the good part.
Beautiful.
To wrap up, again, I appreciate all your time and dedication. But you heard tonight that among us tonight, we have a sweet 16 board member from the state of Ohio, because there's only, Ron is the 15th person who's served this much over 40 years, as you heard in the center. And so because of that, we went above and beyond, because we thought for those 43 years of leadership, how can we recognize Ron so that we know that he will always be part and will always believe something or be part of the way? Well, I think that when you open this up, you'll find that this will be put up, and it will certainly be a reminder of what you have done for us all along the way. And yes, you have to open that.
Did you wrap this, too?
I did. Actually, actually Chuck Grimmet wrapped it. I did the bow. Chuck did very well.
Right here. Right through the finger. What did Chuck do to this thing? Jesus.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my God.
There you go.
What on earth?
So Ron, that sign will go between this school, the Powers School, and the Amherst Junior High. He will be known as the Gav Booby Guy. But again, we congratulate you, and the three of us certainly have appreciated working with both of you, and we certainly look forward to working with the new people that will be coming on to the board. So congratulations on everything you've done, and best of luck as we move forward, because we know you'll always have to come from Amherst to just be here. So congratulations.
That I will. Thank you.
Mr. Engel, would it be okay if I shared just a couple of things?
Oh, my goodness. I forgot to let you and Amy say anything.
No, that's, that's quite okay.
Because Ron, Ron flustered me when I said we had an hour, then I tried to, but after the words, I think Amy has something she would like to say as well. So we will divert to you.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Engel. And, and I just, I don't want to take too much time, but I, I did want to say thank you, and express on behalf of our family, words of appreciation for Ron and Valerie. And I think back 14 years ago, when you made the decision to invite me to be the superintendent here at the Amherst Schools, it was one of the best things that not only happened to me, but our entire family. And not only did I have an opportunity to be a part of a wonderful school district, a superintendent of a, of a wonderful school district, but our family had the opportunity to relocate to Amherst, and Amherst has, has become home for us. And our three children were so thankful and so appreciative, and just so blessed that they had the opportunity to graduate from Steel High School, class of 2010, 2014, and 2017. And just so blessed that our family is able to be a part of this school district and this community, and, and our oldest son and his wife have purchased a home here in Amherst, and they want to raise their family here. And our youngest son, he, he's gonna be marrying his high school sweetheart next, this next summer, and they want to be here in this area as well. And our daughter, although she works in Fort Myers, she often talks about how much she misses being home in Amherst. So again, thank you for, for the opportunity and, and what it's meant for our family. The other thing I wanted to share is just how much we appreciate, as an administrative team, your big-picture perspective. Mr. Engel shared a thought about focusing on the big picture, and, and obviously, this is a big organization. As you know, a school district, our budget is almost a $40 million budget. We employ about 425 staff. We have 3,700 students. It's a very complex organization with lots of moving parts. But you have always focused on what is in the best interests of the district as a whole, and is the community as a whole. And that has allowed us, as an administrative team, with your support, to move the district forward. And your ability to make decisions, oftentimes very tough decisions, short-term decisions, painful short-term decisions, but decisions that are in the best long-term interests of the school district is commendable. And I can think back to 10 or 11 years ago, after we were able to pass the levy, we entered into a time of declining enrollment, and I can remember conversations about closing schools, reducing staff to, to match what was happening with our declining enrollment, consolidating services, and those are tough, tough decisions that had to be made. And you had the courage to make those decisions, but because you did, we now have some things in place that otherwise wouldn't have been possible, because you had the courage to make, make some of those tough decisions. We now have things like all-day, everyday kindergarten. We have Spanish at the elementary level. We have courses like forensic science and biomimicry at the high school. We have orchestra. We have technology throughout our district like we've never had before. We have facilities that have been upgraded, our media centers, this building, our athletic facilities, all because you had the courage to make tough, tough decisions, which were painful at the time, but it led long-term to some major, major improvements for our school district and brought us to where we are today. So again, on behalf of our administrative team, and on behalf of our family, we just want to say thank you, and we're gonna miss you. Thanks again.
Thank you.
I'll make it quick. I could echo all that everyone has already said. Suffice it to say that these are two stellar individuals. They have served the Amherst community very well, passionately but objectively, and been a part of, and they have also led, the school board. A very effective and functional school board. At this point, all I can say is thank you for your leadership, your passion, your ideas, your dedication, and your friendship.
Thank you.
I have a few.
Sure you want me to say something?
Oh, my God. Remember, Ron, 15 seconds.
You guys should know me by now.
Five-minute rule for speeches.
This may take less than that.
Okay.
When I became a member of this board 43 years ago, I told my wife Natalie, "I would not bring School Board Matters home. So never ask me any questions, because I will not tell you anything." Natalie retired from the Amherst School since past school year for 27 years of service, and to this day, we have not broken that agreement. She's never asked, I never tell. Okay, we kept, we met, we kept that pact. I'd like to, I'd like to take a moment, though, and acknowledge Rex Engel, Mark Zappa, Teresa, and Valerie, for your unwavering commitment, your dedication, and your sacrifice. In other school districts in Ohio and throughout the United States, we've all seen the undesirable effects of those school boards whose members had personal agendas. Amherst, on the other hand, has been very fortunate over the years to have, to have had board members, with the exception of one or two, okay, serving for the right reasons, that being the children and the families of Amherst. being the children and the families of Amherst. Board members who work together and understand the importance of unity, honesty, and transparency. It's perfectly acceptable to agree to disagree, but in the end, the board must be unified. There's no room for personal agendas, and simply stated, you don't air your dirty laundry in public, period. That's, I've always felt that way. It begins with the board, though, on how, and how they go about their business, which is why whenever you ask someone why they moved to Amherst, you always receive the same answer because of the excellent schools. If the board is not unified, honest and transparent, the district is going to suffer. In my forty-three years serving on the board, Rex, Mark, Teresa, and Valerie are perhaps the very best I've ever had the opportunity to work with. And personally, I would like to say thank you for always doing the right thing. Thank you. Please help me. Amherst has been very fortunate to have people like Steve Sayers, Amy Giafredo and her staff, Mike Molinar, Sarah Walker, Joe Tellier, Ashley Harrigan, Nick Tony, Casey Wolf, Andrew Gibson, Rhonda Newhoff, Jill Giovinazzo, Brian Tipner, Corey Rourke, Tia Ford, Doug Cogdell, Chuck Grimmet, Deanna Kebly, Jenna Porosowski, all of our secretaries, aides, counselors, paraprof, social workers, cooks, bus drivers, custodians, maintenance staff, and most importantly, our teachers for serving the children of Amherst. Very, very fortunate. These are pieces. All those serving in this district are here because the board has always had a policy of hiring the best person for the job, and make no mistake, these are the best. I've always said I would stack our people up against any school district in the country, knowing full well we are second to none, and I mean that. Howard Cosell once said, "The ultimate victory is derived from the inner satisfaction of knowing you've done your best and you've given the most out of what you had to give." And you've gotten the most out of what you had to give. Sorry, heart. I've always tried to give my best, and my ultimate victory is knowing I played a small role in the Amherst Schools being what it is today, educationally at the top and financially solid. Regardless of what we do in life, in the end, all that matters is if we, is if you look in the mirror and honestly tell this, and honestly tell the person you see that you've done your best. John Ruskin, an English writer, philosopher, and art critic back in the Victorian era, once said, "The highest reward for a person's toil is not what they get, is not what they get for it, but what they become by it." I can honestly say I've become a much better person for having the opportunity and the honor of serving the Amherst community, which was given to me by the people of Amherst. For the better part of sixty-two percent of my life, I did the math, it was crazy, okay? And I hope I can be said, it can be said, the Amherst Schools are a better place because of my participation in helping shape its future. Both of my sons, who are both here tonight, Anthony and Matthew, graduated, and as I did, graduated from Amherst, and our teachers did a very extremely good job of getting us ready to prepare for life's challenges. I can't, these guys do great, great, great stuff. But now it's time for Natalie and I to move on to a new chapter in our lives. We've got an incredible two-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter. A little booger. She's got a, she's got a tat tied right around her finger. She's incredible. You know what that means, Steve. Experiencing her life. So again, I want to thank all of you, everyone. I wish you all the best, and may your ceilings always be high and your visibility unlimited. Thank you.
I can't compete with that. I did not take the time to prepare those kind of comments, mostly because I'm not that person. I'm the person that gets the job done behind the scenes. I don't want the recognition. Something I've been criticized for in the past, that I don't do anything for the district. Unfortunately, I have done a lot for the district. I'm just not that person that's out there bragging about it. The election was devastating to me, to say the least. This school district is a huge part of my life. My kids can't understand how I can't continue when I live, eat, sleep, breathe Amherst Schools. So they've been through it with me in the time that I've been on the board. My kids have both graduated from high school, and my kids will tell you it wasn't good being a school board member's child because it's not always a good thing to be in the buildings when your mom is a school board member. Both of my kids graduated from here and are very highly successful. My son is a dentist. My daughter just graduated as a physician's assistant, and I attribute a lot of that to the high-powered education that they received in this school district and the kind of people that they encountered in their teachers and staff and everybody, the bus drivers, custodians, guidance counselors. We have phenomenal people in this district, and this school board appreciates every single person that works for us, whether we can say it every day or not, whether we show it publicly or not. We know that our staff is the heart of this school district, and we do appreciate them. I don't have any cool words of wisdom like Ron did, but I do feel that Ron and I have both left a great legacy and would hope that, moving forward, the Amherst Schools can continue on the great track we're on right now. We have a lot of fabulous projects underway and looking forward to passing two levies and keeping us financially stable into the relatively near future. And I will be around town. Thanks very much.
That concludes the presentation.
You sure, no?
And we do have some cake.
Oh, we're going to break.
If that's okay with the board.
We have a chat with Valerie and Ron.
We don't need any kind of motion for a recess, right?
No, no.
There's cake over there. Let's go have some.
Go have some cake.
I'll be first here.
I want to sign up for the public participation, so we're going to move on. Treasurers' report. Mrs. Giafredo?
Yes. This evening, I just want to do a brief financial recap. We are about four hundred and forty thousand dollars ahead in revenue year-to-date, and we are just about fifty thousand dollars over last year in expenditures, just fifty thousand, and we have added to the cash balance. So we're doing well. We're about halfway through. Expenditures are right on target, so that is it.
Good.
That's it.
Any questions for Amy? Thank you.
So I'll move on to my recommendations this evening. Item eleven A, approve the minutes for the November seventh special board meeting. The regular meeting minutes of November fifteenth. Item C are the treasurer's financial reports for the month of November, the standard reports that you receive, which are the cash reconciliation and the detailed fund balances, a FINSAM, a checklist, and the forecast reports. Item eleven D are, is an exhibit for supplemental appropriations. There are some increased appropriations and some decrease in appropriations, and all of them are grant funds. So we are reconciling our grant appropriations to the Department of Education, CCIP, grant allocations for the twenty-two fiscal year. Item E are after-the-fact invoices. Item F are donations, and that concludes this section. Are there any questions?
Making motion to the chairman?
Second.
Discussion? Rule call.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs., Mr. Yakubozzy? Item eleven G is a resolution requesting to submit to the electors of the school district the question of a renewal of the four-point-nine mil tax levy for the purposes of current expenses pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section fifty-seven oh five point two-one.
Is there a motion?
So.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Discussion? Rule call.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozzy?
Aye.
Item eleven H is a resolution determining to proceed with the submission to the electors of the school district the question of the renewal of an existing emergency levy pursuant to Sections fifty-seven oh five point one-nine-four and fifty-seven oh five one-nine-seven of the Ohio Vice Code. So. Second.
Discussion? Rule call.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozzy?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Mr. Sayers?
Thank you, Mr. Yakubozzy. Just a couple of items here, actually, three items. First one, just wanted to update the board. Not sure if you've noticed, but our walking track, walking, running track project is underway here at the Junior High Power Site, and Chuck Grimmet and Rob Glass have kind of spearheaded that project, and it's going very, very well. There is some additional work to be done with compaction and packing down that gravel, but that's going to be a nice, nice project, and we're hoping to pursue some grants with the Lorraine County Health Department, potentially for some signage and maybe some benches, those types of things. So it should be something that our students, staff, and community could all enjoy. So again, we'll keep you posted on that project, but a very, very nice thing that Mr. Glass and Mr. Grimmet have worked on, and it just kind of came together for us at the last minute, and fortunately, we were able to figure out a way to make it work. Summer projects, I know the board's had an opportunity to review these items, and you see as one of our attachments, the list of projects that we are recommending over the next six or seven months. And as the board is aware, we're a little bit earlier than usual with this recommendation. Again, the board is aware of the supply chain issues that everybody is encountering, so we thought it made some sense to start this process a little bit earlier this year in hopes that we can get everything completed by the time school starts next year. But again, some items there for your consideration. Wanted to highlight a couple of things. The first item, big item, is essentially a renovation of the Steel Gymnasium, which would include flooring, painting in the gym, new sound system, as well as new updated bleachers. So we're excited about that project and getting that process moving along, again, pending your approval. And then the other item that we're very, very excited about is the Steel High School Makerspace Project, and that project will take place in our old woodshop area, and Mr. Molinar's going to talk a little bit more about that as part of his report. But the last item I wanted to mention is we also have an item on the agenda this evening. Unfortunately, she was not able to be here. As you know, the holidays are very busy with a lot of family, get-togethers and so forth, but we are recommending Rachel Mellon as our new coordinator, communications specialist, communications and community relations specialist is the actual title of the position, and she is actually an Amherst graduate, lives here in Amherst, has her Bachelor of Arts in Communication, has worked at a couple of different nonprofits, the Genesis House, Cornerstone Pregnancy Service, that nonprofit over in Aleury, I believe it is, and she's currently working with Trinity Church here in Amherst. So lots of great credentials, reference checks were just outstanding, and we're looking forward to having Rachel as a part of our team here, here in Amherst, again, pending your approval, and we hope to have her at perhaps our January board meeting when schedules are a little bit more flexible than what they are right now. But as of now, that completes my report. Thank you.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Administrative committee reports, Mr. Molinar?
Yeah, three items I want to share. The first one is, hey, we won. We won the Each Child Reads Grant for our region, so we're one of, thank you.
Nice.
We are one of probably only sixteen school districts in the state who received the award. They were only, again, awarding one per region, so we've been awarded sixty-nine thousand dollars. What I'm really excited about now is not just the money, but the opportunity. There's a dyslexia committee that's with the science of reading research and a lot that's going into dyslexia and the importance of really assessing students and finding where their struggles are. There's a lot coming down the pike. Actually, the committee has to implement a guidebook, I think, by December thirty-first. So there's going to be a lot of, I don't want to call them regulations, but there's going to be a lot of emphasis and a lot of actually rules and regulations on different things we have to do to really help kids with dyslexia, and I feel like we have an opportunity. We're going to be on the forefront as one of just maybe a dozen districts who are going to be given the money to implement assessing students, supporting students with new materials in curriculum, pre-K through first grade, monitoring students, staff professional development for our pre-K through first grade teachers. So we just have a great opportunity to be, again, on the forefront of this, and I'm excited about it. Kudos to our staff, specifically Brianna Carden and Erica Kaufman, our two literacy specialists. When we had our finalist interview, and it was all over, and Brian Tipner was a part of it as well, I just, I said, you know, if we win this award, it's not because of what we wrote, it's not because of what we have in the district, it's because of you two and just what you've done already so far with the work you've done with committees and throughout the state. They've just been recognized as some of the best out there already. And so I believe we won this award because of those two, so congratulations to everyone in the district. It's awesome. I can't wait to get started. Second thing is, I mentioned last meeting about the Ohio Math Pathways, that the state's looking at an alternative pathway besides Algebra II. Most school districts in Ohio have your algebra, geometry, and Algebra II as your kind of first three math electives, and the state was wanting to move away from kind of funneling everyone to take Algebra II. So they were looking for alternate pathways. When this came up last year, we were fortunate that when we presented it with our math department at the high school, they were very interested in piloting a program, which we did this year. So our students at Steel had the opportunity to take Algebra II, but also a quantitative reasoning course with Michelle Kamcheck. She was piloting it. And so they actually kind of had two options this year. Next year, there's a couple more that I mentioned could be piloted, and Tim Sumser at our high school is interested in doing that. We applied for it and just received word today that they've received our application, so we will be offering that next year as well. So for Steel students, when it comes to your third level in math at high school, they will have an option of Algebra II, quantitative reasoning, or data science and foundations, which is really exciting. I had a meeting with curriculum directors and superintendents a few weeks ago, and they were asking, everyone was asking, what are you doing with math? What are you doing? Is anyone doing anything different this year? And everyone said, no, we're just, we have Algebra II. And I was the lone person who got to say, well, we actually are piloting quantitative reasoning, so our students, and they asked how it was going and about the course, and our students love it, it's a lot of hands-on. And then everyone was saying, what are you doing next year? And everyone's like, we want to take a year to figure out what's going on in the state and what's happening, and we'll let everyone else kind of pilot these things and figure it out. So almost everyone I've talked to is just having Algebra II next year, and we're going to have all three. So I feel, again, kudos, not to me, kudos to the math department at the high school. It's their decision to kind of move forward with these paths and opportunities, and they just, they want to do it. So I'm so proud of our staff at the high school for having that opportunity next year. And then finally, Steve mentioned the Makerspace. Kind of wanted to show you a little map here of what we were doing. You know, we've been talking about creating a Makerspace at high school for a few years now. COVID kind of put a stop to some of that a little bit, but recently this year, put a kind of committee together with technology. We have some art teachers, Stephanie Boggs, who does computer science, Davis Inyon, who's our orchestra director, but he also does robotics, which is awesome. So we got together and we are in the process of now starting the Makerspace. Probably, Steve, we're going out to bid, hopefully in January, for some construction of the areas, and then hopefully that will be prepared and finished before school starts next year. But I wanted to show you the space. You kind of see there at the bottom, Exit B, that's where you come in, the main front doors, and you see the office right there. And then down the back hallway, where you see the purple and orange, that's where Stun was live, is the back hallway, the three-hundred hallway. The orange right now is in the old shop room, which is kind of used for robotics and storage. And also, before that, three-twenty is Colleen Walker's program. Across the hall in purple, you have Emily Wensel's program, two specialized programs, and also Stephanie Boggs is there in three-seventy, three-seventeen, yes, three-seventeen, right there. So as we were looking to create the Makerspace in the old woodshop area, and we visited a few sites, including Hawkins. Hawkins School and some others, we realized that we need a little bit more space. So as we started looking at Colleen Walker's space and kind of combining them together, which we're going to do, it's gonna be awesome. But then the idea was, well, where's Colleen go? And as we started talking about the space down there, we really started talking about Colleen's specialized program and also Emily's program. Emily's program is down there because of some special needs for restroom facilities and some kitchen facilities and some other things. And quite honestly, you could talk to Sarah Walker, I mean, many years ago, I mean, that she, they were, I guess, placed on the hallway because we kind of had the facilities there.
That's where the stuff was.
That's where the stuff was. So that's where we put the classes. So as we were looking for creating this space that Art wants to use, Davison wants to use for robotics, Stephanie Boggs, it was very difficult making all the pieces fit together. It just wasn't working. So finally, the committee came together in kind of big picture, said, why are we trying to force these pieces together? Maybe we don't have to put all the pieces there. So we started looking, well, where could we find alternate space? And so when it came to the realization that Colleen Walker and Emily Wenzel don't have to be down there, well, if they're somewhere else, where could they be? And we really started just kind of brainstorming of, instead of making them be in a space that kind of works for them, why don't we move them and make a space specifically for the program? And so we found two spaces, again, needing water and restroom facilities. We found the two largest rooms in the middle of the building there in the green. One is a study hall and one right now is an intervention specialist room. We knew we could probably use those two large rooms to create brand-new spaces for both their classrooms and put in proper restroom facilities, kitchen facilities, workshop facilities, because they run workshops, and I think Sarah's gonna talk about a few. And so we actually grabbed also the social workers kind of office. And kind of hard to see on this, but there's some coloring there. We're gonna put doors in between the rooms for them to share the spaces. We're gonna put in a restroom facility proper for what they need, kitchen facility, washer and dryer facility. And the social workers room is gonna be kind of a workshop where they can work and do some of the programming and create some things that they're doing, which I think Sarah might, Sarah might share. So we're gonna create a space specifically for them, which then really freed up the back hallway to really, on the first project with the Makerspace, but in the future, hopefully do even more down there, we'll be able to actually, we're setting Davison back there to the area for robotics. We're gonna put orchestra back in the area where it was a few years ago. So everyone can have access to all those spaces. And so really, I'm just excited about it because not only did we create a Makerspace, we also created another space for two awesome programs and put the students right in the middle of the building where they should be. So I'm excited about this. And that concludes my report unless you have any questions.
Thanks, Mike. Well done.
All right, you get to move to the next slide.
You're up.
Thank you. So talking about the new spaces and the new opportunities for our students in Colleen Walker and Emily Wenzel's classroom, I just wanted to share some of the things that they're doing because in a lot of respects, they are, you know, I love having, the idea of having them in the heart of the building because of the things that they're able to bring and the things that they're able to do. So just two holiday transition activities that they've done, and they put this out there for the whole district. On the left, you'll see some stationery that's created by the students in Colleen Walker's transition classes. What she does with those is the students take orders, they create, they design, and then they distribute. And so people are then able to use those, give them as gifts. I've got some on my desk myself, you know, and so it's just a really great give back to the district, but also providing some functional vocational skill development for them. And then the one on the left, Emily Wenzel's Comic Creators, this year they did little votive candles. Last year it was hand sanitizer, which was fiercely appropriate. And so the one you see there is a gingerbread-scented votive candle that they put together. And again, taking the orders, distributing, collecting, you know, so a lot of different levels and a lot of different skills developed with our, with our kids there. And so I think that space, what that's gonna do is truly bring them into the heart of the building with the move to the new classrooms. And we're, like, I remember Emily's classroom, I remember when it was my senior lounge and when it was a kitchen. And, okay, there's an opportunity, we've got a kitchen, we've got a restroom back there, this is a great place for the kids to go. Well, now we're going to tailor-make classrooms within, within the building for them, and I think, I think that's huge. Next one, Mike. So Second Harvest has also had a big month this year with the efforts of Jill Mallorca, our social worker, along with Katie, our new social worker, Katie Kirschbaum. We had two December distributions. One was last week, was our one at Steel. It's a drive-through that's just for members of the Amherst community. And then Second Harvest did a mobile drive-through, a drive-through mobile pantry with us on Monday. It was very cold, but spirits were high and we had a lot of fun. But we were able to serve over 408 families between those two events, over half of them being families from within our community. Want to do a couple shout-outs, though, for Powers PTO. I know Principal Tepper had mentioned their toy drive, and that's them in the lower-left corner. Just as folks were driving through, we were able to provide them with something a little bit extra as they were coming to pick up their food. And then also Douglas George was able to join us for the December 16th pantry, and he was handing out $50 Flegner's gift cards. And so it was just a very nice, like, the whole community getting involved. And then my last one is just a shout-out to the Comic Community Program. All of the previous events that we've had so far, we've had three. They're all on Comets Live here with us today. Getting a lot of traction. We've got over 100 views for, for a lot of them, so I'm really grateful to have that opportunity. And then we've got a couple upcoming events with, in February 9th, March, and then in April. So keep an eye out for information on those. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Sarah? Thank you. Well done. You already spoke once, Rec. You're done tonight.
All I have to say is enjoy one of those 21,000 cookies that you can read about in the talk, in the paper. That's the end of my report.
Did Teresa order them all?
I don't want to know. I don't want to. So enjoy those cookies. That's been the highlight.
He's done.
He's done. He wasn't allowed to.
Okay. Any other, any other reports, Steve?
No, that's, that's all the committee reports we have. Thank you.
Personnel recommendations?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
We can, we can move forward if okay with you.
Yep.
Okay. Personnel, in terms of personnel, we have actually a number of items there for your consideration. And I know the board has had an opportunity to spend some time prior to the meeting reviewing and looking at these items and, and asking questions in regards to these items. So at this time, I will recommend approval of items 14A through 14V.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
I heard Mark first, Teresa, sorry. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye. Now we're on board recommendation, number 15, right? Do I have a motion for 15A? Mark and Val seconded. Discussion? Rule call.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye. Item 16A, Steve?
Yes, educational recommendations here have a number of items, including some trips. Our program of studies, as Mike has referenced, includes new course offerings for Steel High School, our partnership with the college, policies that have been reviewed by our policy committee. We see graduation contract with the Woolstein Center there and an additional memorandum with the Amherst Teachers Association. I did want to mention that we were fortunate. I know it worked out this way last year at Rocket Mortgage Fieldhouse, but that we were able to get the 10 o'clock slot for commencement, and I know that was very well-received because we're able to finish commencement and then families still have the rest of the day. So we were fortunate at the Woolstein Center to be able to lock in that 10 o'clock slot as well. So that's certainly a good thing and hopefully we can keep that moving forward. But at this point, would like to recommend items 16A through 16H.
Is there a motion? Val, and Rec. Second. Discussion? Rule call.
I'm sorry. I have, that we already took 16A to 16H?
No, 16A through U, A through H.
Okay, we said 17. All right. 17A through 17B. Excuse me, please repeat.
No, no. We're on 16A through H. 16. We just, we did 15A, then we jumped to 16.
That's why. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Val moved, Rec. Seconded.
All right.
Go ahead.
Got it.
Rule call.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye. Is this recommendation, Steve?
Yes, just three items here. I did want to clarify a couple of things. The first item there is for the scores table in the gymnasium. Seems like a good time with our other renovations to go ahead and get that taken care of as well. And that is actually at no cost to the district. That new table's actually paid for through the advertisements that are on that scores table. So I wanted to clarify that. And then the summer project list that I spoke of earlier. And then the last item there is just a cessation to move forward with the bidding process. And that's the reason we're asking for that authorization is we believe the construction documents will hopefully be finished before our regular board meeting in January. And this gives us the authorization to go out and, to go out for bid, again, hoping to keep our timelines in place to have the project completed by next, next August. So with that, would like to recommend approval of items 17A through 17C.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Discussion? Rule call.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye. I can obtain a motion to go to executive session to discuss personnel employment matters with no action to be taken. Mark, mark motion, Teresa seconded.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye. For the most part, the meeting's concluded. We're gonna go into executive session. We're gonna come back out. There'll be no action taken. Then we're going to adjourn. So, thank you for coming.